I'm gonna need to look at your thing on this.
Seven or five.
No, no problem. So, all right, so we'll do that. We've got the minutes and we have this outline. I also would like, as we used to say in junior high, make a reportation. I attended three different housing webinars. I'd like to, at some point, I don't know when it would be tonight, but I'd like to go into that. All right, so we'll start with Rich. Rich is, as of this moment, not on the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I assume Rich wishes to continue as an alternate?
I would like, it's fair, yes. And if appointed, I will vote for godmother who knapped the pipe.
What does that mean?
I don't know. No other politician knows what that means either. I would like to continue.
He'll serious you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I just have to say what I am going to say because it's been my observation that the worst moments on this board have been related to stuff that Rich has brought up and I think has impeded the progress and made me incredibly frustrated and made me not want to be here. So, I think we talked about this kind of before. And I, and so, my only hesitation is that I don't want to go to the place that we were at, you know, for actually a couple of years. And so, I appreciate the fact that we're not spending an hour on the minutes, you know, anymore. But, so, I guess, I need to, I would like you to always express your viewpoint, but to know when to stop expressing your viewpoint if it's not going to make its way into the, like, majority opinion. You just have to accept being in the minority. I'm in the minority quite a bit. And it's like, I, you know, I just give it up. So, you know, we have a democratic board and that's how we do. So, that is my kind of only hesitation. And I also wanted to be sure that we don't have other people that didn't know that that was on our agenda tonight and might also want to be here. So, that's just what I want to say.
Thank you for that. I see some of that behavior in me. I hope I'm smarter now. And so, I appreciate that honesty.
Yeah, I mean, I, as you know, I'm not sure you know. And I did feel that the past, this past year was better, except for a couple of moments. And actually, you know, it's the first time I felt like, really, that you, I mean, we're speaking frankly, so, and I, I've, you know, it felt like, oh, you're actually on the board as opposed to referring to the board as the board and you as something else. And that certainly felt a lot better. I absolutely echo the concern that Vicki stated is, is, I absolutely do not want to go back to where we were earlier. It was frankly, for me, awful and unnecessary, in my opinion, just absolutely unnecessary. And the other thing is, is I have been, people, I have been, people have given me their opinions. And one thing they've said, and I think it's worth discussing, is that Rich, you have run, three times, you've run against everybody on the board and lost decisively. And they've said, you know, why, why does that result in an appointment on the board? And that you presented two zoning amendments that were soundly defeated and were a spokesperson for another, that frankly, I thought was just a horrible zoning amendment. And I understand the attitude of, well, why does that result in you being on the board? So, you know, what's your?
So, I guess I would like to respond. I have, you may know, I think you may be on my mailing list of people. I regularly get notes from people saying, please keep going, Rich. The, the board doesn't understand. I'll just leave it at that. And so, please do continue. So, I understand better my role. I am going to advocate. I am going to speak up to Vicki's point. And when there's a clear decision, I realize I have to stop.
Yeah, and I would also ask that you're... I just felt that there was so much hyperbole and putting down of individuals on the board, for instance, on your mailings and in your, in your, what is it, your blog? And, you know, when you tell the board, like, with the senior housing article, when you tell the board you're going to support the board and then, you know, you're going to support the amendment, and then the next thing that's available on your blog is, well, no, you decided not to, that's, to my way of thinking, it's, that's not okay. So, I mean, you know, we've been, we've been through a lot together, Rich. And I, and I, and I mean this, and I don't mean this cynically at all. When, when people go through a lot together for good or for bad, for me anyway, you know, you, we get to know each other and I, I appreciate you, okay? I do. And I appreciate your, your standing behind what you believe in and everything. So, that's, you know, that's from my heart. I do have serious concerns about if you reappointed and, you know, well, you've got another three-year run and you decide, well, I don't have to worry about that anymore and we go back to the way we were. I am concerned about that.
Yeah, I guess the way I, the way I feel, I mean, it has been better recently. And as you say, I think you've realized some of the problems. So, I guess my feeling is that if you, you know, if you realize that and you can make things better, then, all right.
Yeah, I'll echo what's been said. I think it certainly has been a lot more pleasant lately, six months here, I don't know, whatever. I don't want to lay blame on anybody's doorstep. I hope that it's, it has to do with functioning of the board and not with the topic we've been working on. Certainly solar is a topic that I think we can all get behind and agree on much more than some of the other things we discussed. So, I hope we can continue the good vibes we have here when we get to other areas, issues where we may not agree as much. Certainly, the first, that first year on Zoom, I was, I was a lot happier on Zoom than meetings personally. So, you know, I think it's been very civilized lately and I give, you know, mostly John and Rich. I give you both credit for that because it's, it's, most of the heat's been between you guys.
Actually, I don't think that's entirely true.
No, I think that John's taken the corner of it.
Yeah, I would, I would absolutely say that.
Been put into very uncomfortable situations having to manage meetings.
Being the chair puts you in a position, and I can tell you quite frankly, I can't tell you how many times I wished I wasn't the chair.
Right.
Right.
It's a horrible position to be in because ultimately you're responsible for the conduct of people on the board, including yourself. And it's really, really difficult.
Yeah, you're the lightning rod for everybody.
I've noticed, yeah.
Well, not only that, the pregnant pause has to be taken up by the, by the chair. And so, you know, it gets all dumped on John. And I gotta say, John has done a much better job than I would have done because I can't, like, zip my mouth. So, he's very politic and that's why I appreciate John's leadership and his tact because, as hard as it's been, it's been, you know, I think a decent response.
Okay, well, I commend Rich for more appropriate behavior, for lack of a better way to say it. And I guess the last thing I would say is echo John's point about the elections and, you know, realizing when you're in the minority and respecting not just the will of the board, but the will of the town.
Yeah, so, I guess, you know, my feeling going forward is, if you're reappointed, I guess I would, I would like your word that you'd really take to heart that you've, you've lost three elections, you've lost three zoning amendments. And I understand that you have people who support you. There's no doubt about that. But the majority of the town does, and that's something you need to understand, you should definitely speak your mind. And I think, you know, we can benefit from that. And I'll tell you frankly, that this year, I have more than before, although I've always listened, I found some, something is really helpful. So, I guess if you would, you know, basically give your word that what happened, you know, what we saw in the last year, you know, it's been solar and we're going to be going to housing and I know that's going to be more loaded for everybody, that there, you know, we're not going to go back to where we were. And I'll promise for my part that I'll do everything I can to be respectful and keep things running well.
And I am, I'm willing to make that, that offer as well, that I will. In fact, you offer, you encouraged me to speak up as well in the past. I will. And I, I understand better when there's not, when the board's not going the way I hope they do. I hope, I hope to have my opinion concluded and then go from there.
So, I wondered if I made a motion to appoint Rich Brown as an alternate for a one-year term, if anybody else would second that as a, you know?
For a one-year?
For a one-year term. And, yeah, I mean, I just think that solves a problem that maybe some people might have about a three-year term.
I would, do we have that option? Is that, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then it just like, okay, so we'll check in in a year. And if everything's hunky-dory, then, you know, then you could be teed up for a three-year term. You just can't appoint him for anything more than that. Life term is the chair's prerogative.
Yeah, no, that's a death term. That would be fine with me. Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I make that motion, would somebody second to appoint Rich Brown as an alternate for a year? Okay.
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 And so, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, congratulations. And I am sure that wasn't fun, but.
It's not what I expected, but that's all.
Yeah, okay. So, congratulations and welcome back.
Well, I think it's an uncompromised, so that, you know, we can see if it's going to work out. And it's not like, you know, doing our interactivity for three years. I mean, you know.
Okay, no, I think that's.
If the next year's productive, then, then it's easy in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, speaking of productive, productivity, I'd just like to review where we're, at least I think we are, and what we can do, what I hope we'll do. My recollection is that, we'll do the minutes update in a minute. Is, is that we were going to, we wanted to have a pretty simple summary that we could get to the town to collect input. And so, and that we don't have to figure everything out. But we do need to get these general things down, get it to the town. And David Robbins was going to get us some graphics to go with it. So, in that context, as we go forward with this thing, I'm just hoping we won't get caught up in the minutiae.
Yep, which we always do.
Which we always do. And let's just nail it down and get this thing out to the, to the people.
I think, John, it needs to be fairly short. I know it's hard to cover everything.
So, let's cut it.
It can't be too long because people aren't going to pay attention.
This, this.
Well, for the thing coming out of the town, we don't need to have every definition written down in perfect clarity, right?
Yeah.
I think, if you like, brush it up.
Keep it simple, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems we just want to get people's feeling, input on, do they want solar every, you know, everywhere with no, with no input at all or whatever, you know? That seems to be the basic thing that people need to say.
Yeah, my sense is that's what, is that people aren't set that they want solar everywhere.
Well, yeah, I've had input from people that say, we're all for solar, everybody's for solar, I mean, that's, but there's places where they would want it in front of their, you know, their neighbors putting it in front of their house, you know, whatever.
Well, that's what's going to happen.
Right, but that's.
So, it's, it's just like their neighbor has a car, sure that people have horses.
Yeah, but see, it's not the same, Vicki. It's not the same. I don't care what you say. Solar is not the same as a garage or a building.
No, I'm talking about a car. It's just a technological difference that, you know.
But I'm talking about visually, you know? We're all for solar, but it's not the same. There are a lot of people that really say, you know, these things sticking in, you know, these big things sticking out there, they don't really want, you know, have them in certain places. I mean, that's the truth, I think, you know?
Well, no, you would know the truth because they told them to you, that they told me that. That's how they feel. And that's how they feel, so that's the truth.
Right, so I'm just saying, there could be problems.
Well, again, again, let's keep in mind that we're not deciding right now.
Right, right.
We're, we're putting stuff out. This is where we always go down the garden path.
Yeah, well, the one thing. Okay.
Can I follow up on one of the discussions from last time?
Yes.
I observed the power cut on Dorchester Road across from.
Bobby Sandborn's.
Sandborn's.
Yeah.
And to my eyes, the three-phase for the skiway is coming in there and then going out. So, all the property downhill from there does not yet have three-phase in. And we were talking about some of those places having larger scale arrays, like behind.
Well, in line Center Village, it wouldn't happen unless they ran a feeder to it.
Right.
Which isn't that far.
Isn't that far.
But it could happen.
But if you're talking about new taller poles, you're going to get into the conversation we had last time.
It's not there in the line, in line Center Village.
Yeah, that field behind John.
Well, it's the day's field.
Yeah, okay. Which is a nice field to look at.
Yeah.
But.
So.
So, what was the, where were we?
Just clarifying about what we talked about, where three-phase ran last time.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't run up from the village to line Center up to the skiway. It just runs from Bobby Sandborn's up to the skiway.
There's that big tower cut from the south that comes in on Dorchester Road, uphill from Line Center, right, right in front of Sandborn's house. And that's where three-phase comes in and then it turns east and goes up the skiway. So, so west of there, where Line Center is, and those places we have talked about as being possible locations for larger arrays.
So, there's no.
It's not a three-phase.
Yeah, there's none on Dorchester Road between, say, the top of the hill.
From Sandborn's.
All the way up, yeah.
Up of Sandborn's.
Pat through the village, through Line Center.
It's not that.
All right, so how, do we want to use this summary or do we want to start from scratch?
No, I like this, but I would not.
So, so let's go through this and take out everything we don't want. Let's just get this done.
Okay, I think height limitation should, on ground-mounted solar energy systems, you gotta, you can't use the acronym or, you just gotta put ground-mounted SES. We're gonna just make people learn about what SES is, but put ground-mounted SES.
You mean at the height limitation?
Yes.
Okay, so full word?
Yep.
Full words?
Yep.
Right, and on that same thing, I might, in the two bolded things for small and large SES, I might say, small solar energy system put in forens again.
Okay.
You did it up top, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just use, let's just use the full word.
Well, I mean.
Do you think there's an advantage to using the?
No, I don't think there is. I think saying solar energy system fifteen times.
We'll just use the full words because it's just going to be confusing.
Yep.
And it's, it's not a very graceful word.
No, it's not. Okay, so, all right, what about, let's, let's go through the, the small solar energy systems. What would you like to change, take out, add?
I found this again confusing. And this gets back to the discussion we had last time about all the counting we're doing and the various ways we're doing it.
Oh, I find it really confusing.
Right, so we're now, we're now counting the square area of the panels, whether you pointed at the sky or at the ground or vertical or put it under your couch, whatever. We're counting that and that's a loan calculation.
Yeah.
And then the lot coverage calculation that is relevant for David is a different calculation.
Yeah, so I know, I talked to David about it because I was completely confused. And he said, he said that the hundred percent thing is to establish, if I, if I understood it correctly, the hundred percent thing that he wanted was to establish whether it's a small or large. That's what he was going to use to establish whether it's small or large.
Mm-hmm.
And the lot cover.
And then that measurement goes, is gone.
Is gone, okay.
And then, and then you have this, the 70 and the drip line.
For lot coverage.
Yeah.
For, for what goes out to the town, for them to say yes or no, do you even need to talk about your fine lot covered stuff?
Right, because what really matters to people is the disturbed area, the involved area.
And they want to know roughly, they want to know roughly what's allowed by right and, and then what they would need to come back and get a special exception or initial use permit, right? So, they want to know, okay, a 40 kilowatt, what's, what am I allowed at the moment? Like, that's what they're, they're going to want to say. That's the question they're asking. What am I allowed to do?
Right.
Okay, we're saying roughly, it's going to be about 40 kilowatts. It's going to be about this big. Is that in the right ballpark?
Four thousand square feet or even bigger.
Right, but that's, the question we want the answer to is, is that the right ballpark size, right?
Yeah, so how, how do we phrase that?
Does anybody write down what Eric just said? That was really good.
Well, no.
But I mean, I think that's, that's maybe the way we want to address it, to say, you know, it's like this big, this big, not that.
So, are we talking about, you said, well, I don't know.
Can't we just say roughly a 40 kilowatt array will be allowed?
Well, the problem with that is because we're not doing it. If we say that.
I know, but they, we're not, we're not, we don't need to put out the technical language for the town.
You could say forty, you could say 40 kilowatts.
You said 40 kilowatts.
Would be, would be, could be 4,000 feet or possibly bigger.
Right, and describe what a 40 kilowatt array would look like. So, people know, okay, is that big enough for my needs and how ugly is it going to be?
Well, aren't we supposed to have pictures? This is all illustrated, so we're not.
Yeah, and there was, John, there was, there was a bit near the end about attachments and pictures. And that's what the pictures were. Because we don't want people to be like, what is this area? What is this drip? And that's not the point of this.
Yeah, because David was going to do it on the common. I think he was going to have a map or a picture of the common.
He was going to use the common, but we can, we can use other things. Am I going to say something?
I was going to say, there's one other thing to say. So, like, 40 kilowatts, is that enough to run, like, my, my?
What does it do?
How much is that? Does that run my house? Does that run, like, you know? And I think this is very generous. This is plenty. But, I mean, we need to give people the sense that.
What, what can 40 kilowatts do?
Yes.
Okay.
And my family being average in every respect. We can use my family as an example, that 10 kilowatts is like, is just right for a family of four. You know, we're reasonably energy-conscious, but we're not doing backflips to save dolphins or whatever.
Do you have electric car?
That's where that.
No, we have no electric car.
Okay, well, then we, why, why, we could phrase this, you know, just like a series of questions with like, kind of homey answers, like, okay, okay, small solar energy systems would be permitted everywhere in town. Well, what is small? Well, small is up to 2,000 square feet of available lot coverage. Oh, and how much energy would that produce? Well, small could generate about 40 kilowatts. Eric Firstenberg's family, average family here in Lime, without an electric car, uses only about 10 kilowatts and there's.
Because he doesn't care about dolphins.
Because, because he doesn't care about dolphins and backflips.
We're actually burning dolphins in the boiler to his house.
Actually, you probably buy the canned dolphin, eat them, then you're tuna fish.
We will look at tuna. We want, we want the, we want the tuna that, there's lots of dolphin bite types that come out by steam workers in Asia.
A small tuna actually is to do that. Yeah, I thought so.
It's perfect for my taste.
So, all right, so we want, we want to.
Make it folksy like that.
Sure, yeah. But you got, somewhere in there, you have to say what the involved area is.
Yeah, so, so the parameters sound great. What do we actually want to say?
Well, I think we have it.
What?
I mean, we have all the details. I mean, okay, so.
But how, but how do we want to say it?
Okay, well, I think, can we all agree on what it says here for small energy systems?
I think we, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the 2,000 square foot number is, because that's, that's what we're allowing for the area of the panels, right?
Why don't we just say 2,000 square feet of panel size? That's all we have to say. We don't have to get into all the stuff.
But that's not the involved area.
Yeah, and then you say 2,000, up to 2,000 square feet of panel size, which could involve, the involved area would be 4,000.
Could be.
Could be, could be 4,000 square feet or greater.
I would just skip the, I would just say, I think that numbers people would need are the 40 kilowatts and roughly what that powers. And then just, and then just, we don't even need to tell them 2,000 square feet. You can tell them, this will be roughly the size of two garages or whatever it is. Or the pictures of David's from the common, or four times my array.
Yeah, what, could we say, could we say 40 kilowatts? 40 kilowatts would be more than adequate for the average home, even with two electric cars, vehicles.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a simple way to say it.
Or we should, or even less judgmental would be to say, you know, without telling people what their need, what their needs are, that, you know, that a family of four with, has a 10,000, a 10 kilowatt array, that's perfect for them when they have no electric cars.
An average family of four?
I don't know, they're pretty outstanding, actually.
Yeah, right, right. No, I think just a family of four.
Family of four.
I mean, right, yeah, I would just say 40,000 kilowatts is more than adequate for an average family of four.
So, let's just say you sat down.
Well, wait a minute, but he was saying 10 was, was.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we're giving, it's 40,000.
Okay, so a family of four, 10 KW is adequate or more than adequate?
I don't think you need to put 10 kilowatts.
Well, because.
It's confusing.
We want to, we want to say 40 kilowatts.
We want to put the 40 in context.
Because people don't know what.
If you told me 40, it would have, before, before coming to this, these meetings, my reaction would be wonderful. What does that mean?
Well, we could say 40 kilowatts is more than adequate for the average, of the average family of four.
But it's way more.
Even if they have two.
We can't judge what people's, we can't, we can't tell people what their needs are.
No.
Yeah.
But we have to give them context and they can decide if 40 is enough for their needs.
I, in fact, I'm a little reluctant to say it's more than adequate because that's sort of a judgment on our part.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
We're using.
We're using phrenzine?
Yeah.
Wow, you know, I mean.
We're, we're establishing that a family of four can do fine.
With no cars.
With no power.
With no electric cars.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's, those are the questions, is, is it big enough for my, is that's the one we got?
With no electric vehicles.
It's a big enough for my car, power my cars, right?
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, I think, God forbid, we get questions, people say, well, oh no, is that for cars?
It's like, yeah, so, so does anybody?
That's his feedback.
Does anybody know how many kilowatt, if you had two cars, what you would need to power those two cars?
Well, you know.
We can find out, that's not hard to do.
Yeah. Because that would be good, if we could get, you know, a family of four, we know ten is fine, but if we added two EVs to it, that would be good.
I'll tell you, just one EV, um, kind of blew me out, so I never paid for any electricity at all until I got my plug in, and now I'm paying for electricity. Well, it was like, it was like thirty dollars. Um, you know, I don't use it every day though, I mean, so it's hard to say, and I, I'm the only one who drives it and all that, so it's, but it, it's like thirty dollars like this time of year, and it was like seventy dollars of electricity in the middle of the winter on my panels and.
But we don't, we don't have a translation into kilowatt.
I'd have to figure that out.
An average Tesla uses thirty-four kilowatt hours per one hundred miles. This equates to thirty-four thousand kilowatt hours per one hundred thousand miles.
So how do we translate that?
Well, if you drive, let's say you drive two hundred miles a week, it should be about eight hundred miles a month, just as an average.
Let's cut it in half, say fifty thousand miles a year.
Okay.
That's seventeen thousand kilowatt hours, so that's.
That adds to the ten?
Well, that's, this is kilowatt hours, not kilowatts.
Yeah.
This is what it's gonna take to charge, to charge back.
That's why we need work here, just quick help.
Yeah, we, we need.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
Well, divide by twelve, if it's fifty, what'd you say, fifty thousand a year?
That's not.
Fifty thousand miles. This is thirty, I, I, I guess, you know, you said thirty-four kilowatt hours for a hundred miles?
Yeah.
Yeah, this said, uh, who knows, somebody said thirty, so the ballpark number is right, thirty kilowatt hours for a hundred miles.
Right.
So, I mean, the problem is, that's the total amount of energy that you used.
Right.
How much do you need to fill it up?
How much capacity do you need on your array?
So, let, let me think about this for a second, but we can do this.
But you can do it.
Well. Yeah. Not, not all active vehicles use the same amount.
Yeah, but.
What size array do charge Tesla?
Ooh.
About ten panels are needed to charge a Tesla. This is only an estimate, though.
Ten panels? But what size panels?
About four hundred now, so that's, that's four kilowatts.
Yep.
So that would be eighteen kilowatts.
If we had two, two cars.
For two cars. And we'll, we'll confirm that.
Yeah, we can ask Mark, tell him a little.
Yeah, so forty kilowatts is still enough for.
Yep.
No, I mean, I, I don't think there's any doubt that forty is generous.
Yep.
I, I agree.
Or supposed to be.
I'm, I'm saying, it's generous, and that's why we did it.
So did we just say four kilowatts for a Tesla? Is that, that, I mean, that sounds, that sounds right to me, and so ten to run your house and the stuff in it, and then, oh, you got Tesla, you're gonna want another four. You got two Teslas, you want two fours, yeah. Right, so Rich, what does that mean, four kilo, that's to charge it from a dead battery to a, or almost a battery to fully, fully charged? Uh, so kilowatt hours is a measure of energy used.
Right.
So, um, and kilowatts is, is, is how much energy you can push into it. I mean, it's like, people say, oh, well, you just plug it into your hundred-temple, you plug your electric car in your hundred-temple
Right.
wall outlet, and three days later.
No, 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 it charges overnight, because that's what I have.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, that was hyperbole. It's, it depends on the car, too.
Right.
Yes.
Um, and so, uh, you know, I think, I think for this purpose to say, we can keep in mind, four kilowatts for an electric car, that's a safe enough ballpark number, and it remains totally generous.
Right.
So.
So the, the, kilowatts is like capacity, it's like, it's like volts on the battery, right? And so this, there's no, that, that's not the amount of energy to produce, so if it's running for an hour, it'll produce ten kilowatt hours, right?
Well, I mean, if you had a four kilowatt array, we'd make four kilowatt hours.
Four kilowatt hours.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I think, I think we're, we're generally, we generally got it, and, and we need to confirm these numbers. So, we're gonna say that the, that the small solar energy systems, forty kilowatts, um, we need to, to say what it powers, which is a, a family of four, um, uh, would, would do ten. And if you add two EVs, you'd be up probably in a, in an area of eighteen, so you have twelve to play with.
Right.
Right. You got twenty-two.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Twenty-two to play.
For your, for your marijuana growing.
Right.
And, I mean, it's also three bucks a. Kilowatt, no, it's three bucks a watt. So, a ten kilowatt array is thirty thousand dollars. I mean, ballpark numbers again.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, so if you really want forty kilowatts, you're talking about an interesting chunk of change.
What would that, so what does that work out to?
Uh, forty kilowatts would be a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
A hundred twenty thousand.
Hundred twenty thousand.
You know, not a lot of people are gonna want them.
There's, there's, you're not gonna get that return, ever.
Yeah, I mean, some people.
For forty, for forty kilowatts, people could conceivably do group projects.
Hopefully, they would.
If, if, if it's a, if it's a real energy conscious community, you can have a lot of houses.
I think that's part of, I, I assume that was part of our thinking, was that we didn't wanna do uses. We want, it's like, okay, what you do with it is, is your business.
Yeah, Steve Alden was in a, in a shadow all year round, I could sell him some power.
Right.
You know, because I've got more sunshine.
Right.
Um, that's an interesting point to say here. We don't care what you do with the power.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, that, that's not on our bullets now.
It's not?
But, uh, not on this side of it.
Yeah, but you know, I think what we should be doing is like, say you sat down and Lori Wadsworth said, oh, so what's the planning board doing? Well, the planning board's proposing small energy systems can go anywhere in town, and we're thinking about sizing it so that it, you know, there'd be systems that, you know, could produce forty kilowatts an hour, uh, uh, you know, forty kilowatts, and she'd go, well, how big is that? Well, the average household uses about ten kilowatts, and if you had a, an electric vehicle, that'd be about four more. So that gets them plenty to sell back to the grid or to sell to their neighbors. Um, oh, and how high could those be? Well, you know, uh, you know, so it'd be more conversational kind of, uh, display, and and we have a picture of Eric and his, his solar array at the bottom of that.
Or we could Photoshop you out, Eric.
They need bigger solar array, let's.
No, no, people should know how big, you know, we'd all drive by that one on ninety-one and, um, you know, see, you can drive up to Hanover and see that. You know, which is like, that's scary big, but it's.
Alright, but I, I do think, I do think that we, you know, we do wanna be saying, you know, we're, we're we're being, uh, conversational, but we, we do wanna give people something to, to bounce off of, so we've got the forty K, we're, we're breaking it down.
Yep.
We've, anywhere in town. Uh, I, I think it's worth saying, I, I agree with Rich, that at least let's consider saying we're, we're not telling you how you can use it.
Right, yeah.
Use is up to you.
Right. Um. How you use it is up to you.
Yeah.
Do we wanna even suggest, you can use it on your property, you can sell it back to the grid, you can sell it to your neighbors in a group?
I haven't, I mean, we could say that.
Yeah, I, I think, I actually think it's a good idea to say all of those uses are allowed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because people are.
Yeah, because they want to know, you know.
You can use it for yourself, you can.
Sell it to your neighbors.
Sell it to your neighbors. Or what was the other one?
Throw it in a box.
No, sell it to the grid.
Or sell it to the grid.
Right.
To the grid. Um, and we're, we're starting off, I mean, we're, we're saying eighteen feet.
Though, so then, then would be, well, there are gonna be some controls. Can we no higher than eighteen feet?
Right.
It can't be in your, you know, setback, and, you know, and like any other structure, there are controls when you're suggesting putting it in a conservation overlay district. You know, just something like that.
Right.
And then we should say, how, how big might this be?
Yes, yes.
You can say, up to four, it could be four thousand square feet or, or even a little bigger.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, it, I, we, it could be even bigger than that.
Yeah, how, how big, how much space would this take up? And you have to say, well, it depends on the orientation and layout of the panels.
And the layout, but it would not be unusual for it to be four, what, what do we say?
Four thousand.
Four thousand square feet.
Two thousand square feet, I think, four thousand, I mean, they're.
Doubling it is.
Doubling it is.
It's reasonable.
Right, and, I mean, that's a sixty by sixty, it's a little bigger than a sixty by sixty parcel, that's three six hundred.
Right.
Here, sixty five.
But nobody knows what sixty by sixty is, you have to say.
But we're gonna have to come up with something.
Right, yeah, uh, yeah, the, I think the two-car garage is an easy one for people to imagine.
Although, if you say, that is.
It'd be five, it'd be five two-car garages.
Right.
Well, that's only twenty thousand square feet. That's only two thousand square feet.
Four, it's, so it'd be ten, what would it be ten?
I mean, I think people's heads are gonna explode if we say, oh, it could be a big ten garages.
So, can we come up with something like, you know, how does it relate to a football field or a basketball court or?
Well, let's do a swimming, like an Olympic-sized swimming pool.
No, I don't know that people know what that is.
I don't know what an Olympic-sized swimming pool is.
Oh, well, that, that's easy, just ask the telephone.
I think the two-car garage is, most people know what a two-car garage is.
How big is the like parking lot behind Stiles? How big is that parking lot?
Yeah, I don't know, I have to measure it. I don't know, I mean, you could say ten two-car garages.
Or what's, what's the capacity of the array on this building?
Of which building?
The one on this building, there's, there's solar panels up there.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know how much they're putting on the fire station either.
We can count those panels and put the new capacity numbers in and say.
Yeah, that's a good idea. An American football field is about one point three acres, so that's not a useful.
That's too big.
Yeah, way too big.
It's a hundred yards wide.
So.
That's how big of a football field is?
Whether an Olympic, Olympic-sized swimming pool.
Three sixty by one sixty, yeah.
Wow. Oh, big. Everyone knows what that is. Are you, Olympic-sized swimming pool?
The hell.
I, I have, I have no idea.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's eighty-two by one sixty-four.
Yeah, that's like a helping, I don't think, I do.
Alright, well, well, anyway, we're gonna have to go over that when, when David Robbins is here, because he's gonna be.
Okay.
So, so, for.
For Mark, everybody try to think of good examples of analogies.
Basketball court.
Well, basketball court might work.
Yeah, everyone kind of has a sense of that.
Two-car garage is perfect.
Well, we have that, but, you know, more things we can.
Yeah, so, a tennis court is twenty-one hundred square feet. So, I don't know whether that's exactly the, within the bounds, but two tennis courts is about four thousand, so it goes over.
That's good.
But you think I have more than one example?
Yeah, why not?
Two tests, what'd you say, Rich? Twenty-one oh six says herodssport.com.
Yeah. I'm at herodssport also.
So I'm actually looking at, I'm actually looking at post pond and using the scale on Google Maps.
Those ponds are a hundred and three acres.
No, not the pond, the tennis courts are the pond.
Oh, that's good.
And those, the, the square that the two tennis courts are on is a hundred, is a hundred by a hundred. So that's ten dollars.
So I'm get, I'm betting that's just the, the bounds of the court, not the comfortable space surrounding it.
Yeah, but this, I'm just trying to figure something that people, that.
Right, the playing.
Can go look at, right here.
But that's, that's gonna be two and a half times what we're talking about.
Yes.
Right. So the basketball court next to it is about fifty by a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred, so five thousand?
Yeah.
Five thousand, that's, that's in the ballpark.
That's in the ballpark.
No, no pun intended, well, um.
Yeah, I need a two, two-car garage and that's it, I could send out.
Okay.
Instead of all this stuff.
I mean, you want, I want, you want to give people something where they can go and look at it.
Well, David, David could do the map of the common, and he could.
Alright, well, again, let, let's not get hung up on this, because we, we can, all of us can do this on our own.
Yep.
So I think we have a, a summary approach um, for the small solar energy systems. I think we've covered everything in here.
And, I guess, the last thing that's not totally clear from the bullet points here is, uh, is your array limited by lot coverage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it says uh, of, of available footprint and lot coverage.
Okay.
Right.
Um, what, what my understanding is not, would not add to your lot coverage, because it's already there, is any, we're, oh, I guess we should basically say roof-mounted, um, systems.
It'll count for a lot of them.
Don't, uh, well, there are, I mean.
Right, we did say that someplace.
Yeah. So let, let's, roof-mounted.
Systems. Yeah, on the, on the backside, it says roof-mounted solar energy systems, I'm not happy with the word freebies, but, um, have no impact on a lot coverage.
Right.
I might put that right up in the beginning, just say right off the bat.
Right.
We're not talking about roof-mounted systems.
Right. Weigh your house down if your roof pulls. Weigh your house down if your roof pulls.
No, I know, we, then you always think about the roof for the reading the whole way down.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, that's really good. Yeah.
So, how should I say, roof mounted systems are?
Do not.
Do not.
Uh, are not limited, yeah, right.
Do not count for.
They're not limited in size, except that their height.
Count for lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, except that they can't be more than thirty-five feet above.
Roof mounted systems, what?
Do not count for lot coverage.
No, no, nobody wants to know about lot coverage.
Let's not, let's not do the planning board talk now, let's, let's say.
Are not limited in size.
Okay, okay, these rules are govern only ground mounted systems, roof mounted systems are, you know.
Right.
Except for, uh.
Except for their height.
Except for.
Except for a maximum height of thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Which may not exceed the townwide, um, at thirty-five.
Okay.
So, everybody knows that it's not anything special.
All right, before we go, before we go on to the dreaded large, uh, let's, let's take a break and do the minutes, which I overlooked at the beginning, does anybody have a minute still?
Uh, I had one.
Go for it.
I have two. Two comments.
Please.
Uh, the, uh, I don't, I think, it doesn't mention Rich Mengy, was he here or not last time?
He was not. He was not.
Okay, so he should be marked out as not there.
Should be.
And then, uh, actually, I lied, there's, there's a second piece in the solar energy discussion section. It says total panel area we measured at the drip edge installed panels. And panels installed vertically would only be measured by the exact amount, which is different from what we're saying, which isn't entirely congruent with what we're saying here, and so.
But I think as.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I think it, it represents what we said there, we're, we're changing it here.
Right.
So, but that's a. Okay, that's a, that's a good point, because I think it's important for us to say, uh, to cover that issue about the fences. Uh.
Okay.
Um, don't you think so? Because we're not gonna count, we're not gonna count horizontal.
Or vertically mounted.
Yeah. We wouldn't count them.
I was looking at the map, so I didn't follow that.
Um, let's, let's just stay on the minute.
Okay.
So, um, are we gonna leave it as we said it in the minutes?
I think that's what we said.
Yeah, okay, so just leave that.
We're changing it now.
Change about Rich Mengy.
Yep.
And what's the other thing? That's it?
Only that Rich wasn't here, but we don't say who's not here.
Typically, we do say.
No, we do say board members asked.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, so I wanna say, yeah, I'll just have that, and, okay.
So, could you send that to David?
I will.
Thank you. All right, so, yeah, um, uh, a motion to.
John, you made the motion, what's the second hit?
Second. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye. Okay, all right, so now we're onto the large.
Okay, so now the large. So. So, uh, large, is anything above, oh, God.
Two thousand square feet.
No, but we didn't, we're not talking about the two thousand square feet.
It's not a small.
Up to.
Up to, right.
Well, no, it's not, it's above, it's more than.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Up to.
Large is bigger than a small.
Large is bigger, large is.
Like ice cream cones.
Large is bigger than a small, yeah.
Yeah, large, large is.
There's a dairy twirl, or a landowner store, or the one in Farrowing.
Say, large constitutes any solar array, any array larger than.
The small.
The smaller. Yeah.
Well, we can just say then the limit's set for the small array, and we don't even have to talk about numbers, we don't want to.
Well, I, I think, again, we, we should say that, because we're talking about twenty-six thousand square feet.
Yep.
And that.
So, say that this.
Fifty-two, uh, what is it, fifty-two thousand?
So, just, let's, let's just say it's, maybe roughly ten times as big as a small.
There you go.
Okay, that's good, yeah.
And if we give a good video over what a small looks like, then.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually pretty good, and what's an acre, fifty-two?
Forty, forty-three.
Forty-three, that's just, uh, an acre and change.
Yeah.
So, like, some of the, I'm trying, maybe some of the, well, some of the.
Yeah, I'd say slightly larger than an acre.
An acre plus, yeah.
In actual installation, it would cover, it would be more than an acre.
Yeah.
Maximum size would cover a little than an acre.
And then people can say, like, well, that's not big enough, or are you kidding me? We're gonna have acres, you know.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it's worth, also worth saying that, 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 you know, large is intended to be, and we're intending this for a commercial application, right? So, people know that it's not gonna be something that their neighbor puts up in their backyard.
Well, can we, but, we're not, we're not, uh, controlling the use, so.
No, we're not, but.
Is it fair to say that a large would need three things?
I think so.
Yes.
So, maybe, maybe we could put that for that.
Oh, you guys remember Mark said that to get any kind of interest for energy investors, you needed to have something that was a lot bigger than what we're proposing here.
Right.
And therefore, I mean, it's like, you know, zoning for something you don't really want, I mean, are you really being realistic here? We're not really, we're not, we're not allowing huge installations.
Given this town, it's not unrealistic, because I could imagine individuals who felt strongly about, um, this and had the means to do it, doing it.
But John, didn't we say also that if somebody came in and wanted to do a really large system that would benefit the town, the select would could override.
That's, uh, on the, uh, on the second page at the bottom.
Right, could override.
They could do what Hannover did, municipal extension.
Right.
But you know what, guys, it's been pretty juicy times for solar installations, and nobody's come ahead and done it. I mean, you know, they could have done it already if somebody really wanted to do it.
So, then what are we doing?
Put in something large, because we wanna be sure that we wanna allow something that's larger than small, but have that reviewed, that's.
So, you know, maybe the way to think about large is, we'll put out some broad parameters, and if everybody has a hissy fit, that's maybe an answer, if we get a few people that say, really? I could do that? Then, um, we could talk to them before we write the rules and say, you know, we're thinking about this, what do you?
Yeah, what, what do you have in mind?
What do you have in mind?
Um.
And so, we don't have to, maybe we don't have to nail down the large system in as much detail.
Well, I think we wanna give, uh, you know, it's helpful for people to know what we're thinking.
Right, yeah, oh, absolutely, but we don't have to have, well, we're gonna.
It's the same thing with a small, we're not, it's not nailed down now, we're just putting this out there.
To get a reaction, I agree.
Well, and we need to have.
The other thing, I don't know whether you said, somebody said, but it just made me, yeah, this is larger than a small, which sounds ridiculous, but, but it's not, because, because if somebody wants to, you know, somebody on their property wants to do something special, they have various needs,
Mm-hmm.
and they wanna do a, a fifty or sixty kilowatt.
Mm-hmm.
What we're saying is, once you get over the size, we don't need to just think of it as the max, a maximal thing. We're saying, once you get over a certain size, you're gonna need oversight, that's all.
Yeah.
That might be more realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, just say, once you're over the small size, then you need oversight.
So, yeah, so we're gonna, you're gonna need oversight once you're over that line, and then the other thing is, we haven't really nailed down the, um.
And why don't we say the oversight would be, you know, through the, you know, or a local land use board, if, you know, I don't know if we're, if we're dumb, whether it's planning board, national use, or a zoning board.
Oversight through a local land.
Land use board, such as the planning board.
Board.
Yeah.
Well, it could be the zoning board, yeah, but.
Um, what about where, I mean, what I wrote is what I recall, but I don't know whether that was right. I said rural, commercial, line common, line center, was that pretty much it?
Yeah, I mean.
Commercial, put it where they're.
Oh, but, and, but last time, people were saying, but not on, on scenic roads, not off of scenic roads.
Right.
Um, so, we might wanna actually put what those roads are, just because we don't have that many of them.
Right, most people don't know what they are.
And most people don't know.
All right. List roads.
Yeah, list scenic roads.
And, um, all right, again, this is for the big stuff, not for the little.
Right.
Yep.
All right, so, and then, and then there would be, um, criteria, and I don't know how much detail we wanna go in about the criteria, and, I mean, I put a little list in here, I, maybe that's enough.
I think we should give, probably give people some idea what they might be.
So, visual, buffer, screening, setbacks, spacing, rows, minimizing environmental disruption, building envelopes, fencing, decommissioning, abandonment.
Yeah, that pretty much covers.
That's fine, cause, cause, we're not gonna get, you know, daddy old grandmas looking at this seriously.
Yeah, easy though, e- easy one.
What about daddy old grandpas, okay?
Yeah.
And anybody, anybody who's serious enough to, to, to look at the big systems, is gonna, is, is gonna be able to sort through what the decommissioning plan might be.
Um.
Yep.
Right.
And, I mean, so are there, are there other details that we wanna add? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, and I guess the next thing I was gonna say is, do we wanna say clearly, this is grist for discussion?
Oh, we do wanna say that.
And we so wanna hear from you.
What I put up here is, this outline is, the starting point is presented in order to elicit feedback from line resident.
Right.
We can put it a different way.
Say it twice.
Nobody reads.
Well, you could say something like, please, we would really appreciate your responding.
When you say, does this sound right for your neighborhood?
Well, if we say your neighborhood, this is for the whole town, so, does this sound good to you?
Yeah.
Because.
Well, for your neighborhood and for the whole town, so think of it, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting, I also, I wanted to ask the flip side of that, it's like, does this sound good for your neighborhood? I could envision a lot of people saying, oh, no, no, not, not my neighborhood.
Sure.
Well.
But, just, I mean, that's, that's important feat, that's clearly important feedback, but also to say, if you're thinking about any of this, you have questions or want more details, we would really like to hear from you.
Well, I, I mean, do we want, I mean, what we, what we want is their feedback, I'm, I'm just in that, in that way. If somebody's thinking of putting up, uh, you know, two panels, we don't wanna hear about their specific case, we just want to know what they, how do they respond to this?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think what you were saying before about the big ones.
Right.
You know, that might be interesting to hear.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should say something like, please, please respond, as to whether, let's see, how would you say, please respond as to whether you feel this is, this would be appropriate in town, or this, or, you know, something like that.
Well, I'm trying to stay as neutral as possible.
Yeah, well.
The outline is, the starting point is presented in order to elicit feedback.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Tell us what you think.
Okay, tell us what.
Tell us what you think.
I think that's right.
Yeah, but, right, we need something in there to, to say, please respond.
Yeah.
And then, how do they get in touch with?
Well, that's the thing, I mean, originally, this, this was, you know, my original idea was this was gonna be,
given a chance.
A questionnaire, and, and then it was gonna be a town meeting, and the little, at least my understanding is now, well, we're gonna, put it in various places, we're gonna put it on listserv, we're gonna put it, um, everywhere we can, I mean, I don't know, do we get it into the church newsletter, or?
Yeah, yeah, so, it sounds like they could send email or snail mail to David, and, um, and then we should set a date, um, and so that we can have a public forum to hear what people say. And then, but, and giving, you know, David a little time to compile all the responses that he's received.
Right.
So, yeah, so when he gets back, we can set a date, and.
Right.
And, you know, it's like, stuff that sits around too long, people don't respond to, so we just, um, I don't know what the, you know, we need to time it so we can get it into the church newsletter, and then hit listserv a couple of times.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we, um.
Get CCL to post it, they post it every week.
Right, I think that the church newsletter is, is, is more of an issue in terms of timing.
It, it's the most time sensitive, yeah.
It's really too bad we can't go mailing one of self addressed stamped off.
Yeah, you know what, if people just sees a ton of lime, I don't want it, could be another tax bill. Well, what else do you get from the town of Lime?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing.
Yeah, but you could, couldn't you say something on the outside?
Don't throw this out, don't throw it out.
This is important, this is from the planning board.
Yeah, right.
No, then they'll definitely throw that out.
Then they'd be so curious to see.
Open this messenger, we shoot the dog. Right. National Lampoon, nineteen seventy-one, what a great cover.
But we can't afford it anyway, so it's just, I mean, it would cost, what, hundreds of dollars to do a mailing?
A couple hundred, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so I did a.
What's that?
They did four thousand postcards, and it cost twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, nevermind.
For Hannover?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but that's.
Were they fancy?
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, we just, just, no, what, four thousand postcards?
Oh, four thousand?
Thousand postcards, twenty-five hundred dollars, that included the postage.
But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have four thousand.
We'd have about eight hundred.
About eight hundred.
Well, we, we wouldn't be able to do a, um.
S A S A.
Mailer, so it would be a envelope with a stamp, yeah.
Yeah, we'd get a bold stamp.
All right, look, I mean, is it, is it qualitatively, do we know that it would be, much better with a self addressed stamped envelope than it would be if we just?
It's not that important, I mean, this is important, but not that important.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's like one issue, and most of the people, I mean, some people don't care at all, I don't know, so it's not.
All right, so, so.
I'm just thinking, maybe the people aren't gonna see the listserv, and they're not gonna see where, you know what I mean?
Church newsletter?
Yeah, no, I think there's a lot of people in town.
We don't get the church newsletter?
Really? Everybody in town gets the church newsletter?
I, I didn't, I didn't for, for a number of years.
Church newsletter?
I actually don't, but.
I used to, but I haven't seen it for a long time.
That's right, we haven't got it.
Yeah, you gotta opt in and say you want it by paper.
You know, that's a good point.
That's a good point, cause I forgot.
I don't think I've gotten.
We haven't got it either, that's right, we used to get it, and then it stopped, and I never made it.
But can't, can't you just look at it online?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, but that's the point, we need to get for people who just read paper and don't go online. Well, so, who, does anybody here go to church? Okay, cause, yeah, well, see, I think more people read the church newsletter than go to church.
Oh, oh, for sure.
If they get it, though, see, the three of us, we just really can't.
If you, if we.
Mine ran out.
We could put a stack of these at church, and we could also get a stack of them over at the school, and have all the sixth, fifth, and fourth, I don't know, the older kids bring it home, or something like that.
Right, all the kids have to take it home to their parents' house.
Right, well, you know, or, you know, or something like that, I mean, if you wanted to go home to all the school age families, we can, you know, we can run five hundred, and run a ream of paper that's not that expensive, and, you know, see if they would take it home to the school.
I mean, when we, when we did the, um, the townwide questionnaire.
That was a mailing.
We, and that was sent, we got a pretty, you know, relatively pretty small response.
Yes.
Are we gonna ask people to fill out this, like, an online survey, or are we?
No.
No, that, that's what we.
You were away.
That's what we started with, and let's just say, that didn't.
So, they, they, they don't, they now have to bring the paper back to us?
No, no, this is not a survey, this is a, if you've got, wanna tell us what, you can email David, you can send him a note, you can drop off a note here, or you can come to our, our meeting on whatever date it's gonna be.
So, people will have to be motivated enough to actually, um.
Get a message to us.
Get a message to someone.
We get twenty people.
No, no, I don't, I, I think we would get more.
I bet we'd get a lot more.
Well, you know, I, I hoped a lot of people would just respond and not have, feel like they have to come out on a Thursday night.
I, I think we've got a decent response.
Yeah, hopefully.
Or they could sit at home and zoom.
Or, let's just say, I think we'd get as, you know, I don't think that a mailing would do that much better.
I don't think it would.
Well, I think David Robbins has already said we, we can't afford, I mean, he's already said.
Yes, he told us.
He doesn't have the money, so.
So, so the reason, the reason I ask is, is, is there nothing like a doodle poll or something like that that we can set up, that's gonna automatically tabulate responses for us?
We could.
Now we have somebody who's gonna have to sort through, I got some paper here, I got some email here, all in different formats, there's blah. Somebody has to deal with.
The answer, I mean, I, we could do a Google, uh, poll, a Google questionnaire, uh, we did that with the LCDC.
Well, we did it with a, with a questionnaire, with a town.
Yes.
Town questionnaire. The problem, I mean, that was in addition to the mailing, becau- because, because a lot of people, Be- because, because a lot of people, if you wanna talk about people being left out, that's where you're gonna have a lot of people left out.
What, Google?
A Google.
Doing a, doing a online.
And it's all done with tubes.
Yeah.
Tubes and, and mice.
Yeah, what we, how's it get to people?
What we did with the L C D C was, we had it online, we also had printed version, we had had them all around, we maybe even mailed them. No, no, we, we mailed them out.
And, well, we then have a crew of pe- people.
That was us.
Sitting here.
That was us.
Were you here too?
Oh. Typing them into Google Forms?
By fingering them into.
Google Forms, so then we could analyze them, so, so that, I mean, that was a lot of work. Yeah. It was a ton of work.
Think this warrants.
I don't either.
This is not, not a big issue.
Yeah.
Um. All right, so, I think. Is there anybody who would like to write this? I'll, I'm, I'm willing to try again, but I'd be delighted if somebody else would rather do it.
I'm, I'm, I can, I'm happy to take a stab at it.
Okay, you have notes, or do you want my notes?
I would love your notes, I can also watch.
Okay, um, just, just read through them.
Cause I'm sure, I'm sure there were some, uh, I'll just, I'll just. Process it tomorrow, but if I need to, I'll watch the tape, cause I'm sure there were. Some nice tidbits there were.
How big is it?
Tidbits.
How big is large? It's bigger than small.
Bigger than small.
Just like ice cream.
Is there a medium?
No, no.
It's not lime.
Not lime, no.
Gonna go to, uh, Keane, I think, for medium.
Yeah.
All right, um, so I, I'll just throw this out there for, for now, because I don't wanna get started, but. Um, I went, I took three webinars.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think you were one or two of them. Um, two of the, uh, Regional Planning Commission. And one, I don't even know what their name is anymore, the, the O C D, or.
Uh, no, it's all the initiative.
It used to be O S I, and now it's.
I don't know what it is, yeah, but that's it.
Yeah.
Um. The, the, um, my impression of, of, of the first two, the R P Cs, I thought one was really well-done, and I thought the other one, you know, not so much. What they all have in common, unfortunately, you know, from my point of view, is they're really. Starting from the premise of, of bigger municipalities with, um, sewer and water, and, and making a lot of suppositions from that. Having said that, I did think that particularly this last O S I, or whatever it's called. Um, which concentrated a lot on Dover, New Hampshire, which again is, you know, not.
Huge.
Which is huge, but they, they laid out a lot of different things. And, um. Once we have a, a, a bigger chunk of time, I'd like to go over some of the things that, that might. What I, what I'm interested in is, is how. At least to my mind, responsibly, is it, or I'll ask it as a question, is it possible in line to, um, get. You know, some increase in affordable housing? And I'm not talking about, you know. A high-rise with a thousand units, but are there creative ways that, that we can, um, uh, do something with that? And, uh, I, I, I will come in with a, with a couple of ideas on that.
I wonder how many ADUs have been put in?
Well, uh, one of the, one of the approaches did have to do with ADUs, and it was. One of the things they said that, that they, they thought was effective is that if you provided. Or if you agreed, I forget what it's called, but, um, there, there's a, I guess, well, maybe it was the workforce housing limit, but I'm not sure it was that, that. But it was definitely, you know, serious affordable housing, and that if you, um. Signed something that said you will rent out your A D U as, under these terms. Um, incentivizing something with that A D U, in, in other words. Uh, maybe you would, you would allow, uh, a twelve-hundred-foot A D U instead of a seventy-five, or fifteen-hundred, or a thousand-square-foot A D U. Something that, that would incentivize somebody renting for less. Um, but making, making it more attractive to build, what they said is that, that, um. For. For a small family, or even some, or, or an individual. Um, you know, having a bigger A D U would be. A good thing.
Right, but there's no incentive to spend more money if you're gonna make less rent, I mean, it.
Well, they said, they were, they said they were having some, some success with it.
Allowing people to build bigger when they get less rent, to get it for the construction costs?
Because it costs more to build it, so you wanna get.
I'm just telling you what they said.
Well, okay, that's, that's nice.
There's gotta be some kind of subsidy.
They must be paying the difference or something.
Yeah, I think there is a subsidy.
And there'd be a time frame.
Yeah, yes, there is a subsidy.
Okay, well, that's.
It's subsidized.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, I put that really badly.
No, that's okay, we, we, we caught you.
You caught me, so what it was, is, is if you, it's like, you know, I guess it's, on a smaller scale, like if, if. If Lime brought in Twin Pines, and there was a place available, and it was subsidized.
Yeah.
But this is subsid- subsidization on a, on a small, you know, individual scale.
Who would pay, who would pay the subsidy?
I have to, I have to look at my notes.
Yeah, well, I know Vital Communities is trying to get, uh, ten million dollars, I think, to be used to develop workforce housing. And I would assume they're gonna concentrate that money in, um. The water and sewer areas, but it doesn't, it's.
Yeah, well, that's, that, everything goes towards the order of the sort.
I know, but it, it doesn't really seem fair, it really seems like where we need to spin off is to, um, get some, you know. Creative ways to do it in rural areas where people are well-suffered, so.
Yeah, I, but that's always what, it's always water and sewer.
Well, yeah, well, it's, it's the whole thing about, you know, for towns that have that, they want all their service and, and people in their areas where their services are. Because it's, they're so much more efficient with more people using it, and you don't have to put in a separate system. So, yeah. Uh, when you have limited resources, that's what you do.
Right, and they're better served by a little transportation.
Yeah, and you can walk to the store, and, you know, a lot of other things.
Right.
So, um, yeah, and so it is, you know, looking at it from their viewpoint, it's a lot better investment.
Right, and the other thing, Mickey, too, I think is that, to really do affordable housing. You can't make any mon- nobody can make any money, just.
Well, that's why you, you need.
Say, like, building, building, say, four units, or whatever. The reason these people, these companies come in and build these huge buildings with, you know, like for the nurses, you know, down there for all the. Is that they build this building as cheaply as they possibly can, and they have forty, fifty units in it, and then you can make some money, but otherwise it's.
Well, here, here's a whole other thing to just looking at, how unaffordable it is to provide housing, is Dartmouth isn't even building dormitories anymore. What they're doing is leasing land.
That's right.
To a third party who builds the thing and manages the thing for ninety-nine years, and that provides housing for the Dartmouth students. So Dartmouth isn't even doing dormitories.
I read that, it was really amazing.
Well, it, it's, but that just tells you how crazy it is.
Yeah, I mean, and, and to, to me, to do. I mean, seriously affordable housing is, without a subsidy, is, is almost impossible.
Well, look, I mean, look at Ray, you know, what he's doing there, he does not have to make any money.
Right.
Ray doesn't have to make any money, he's trying to do it without even, and, you know, it's gonna be hard for him.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it's really a grassroots effort of everybody, okay, so maybe you rent a room, or to, in your larger home, to a person, not even. Creating a separate A D U, or you create an A D U, because I don't see, the town of Lime barely gets by as it is. Uh, I don't see the town funding that, and so it's, individuals need to be creative about the use of their space, and, you know, if they're not using half the house, then. Put it in an A D U, and that's allowed, and, you know, I guess the septic might have to be enlarged, but that's, you know, it would have, it's better than a new septic. Somewhere. Um, cause you're hopefully relying on the same well and using the same driveway, and it doesn't make the town look essentially that much different, there would be more cars.
But there really wouldn't really be an incentive for that, it would just be your own.
Well, it's just like, everybody says, help me, help me, but it's like, we have to, like, so instead of me sending money to Sierra Club, I put in solar on my house. Right, and it's, like, yeah, I'm never gonna get a payback.
Now, you, you know the A D U and rented below market?
Right, and so, or to people you know in town that you wanna have them stay in town. You know, that's, that's what we need to do, and it's.
Right, so people are doing this for the goodness of their, or the goodness of their heart, yeah.
Right, it is, cause it's not economically feasible, and we can't expect a developer to find Lime to be the place to do it.
Right.
Um, you know, it's like CCL, you know, that's a grassroots effort that's supported by the community. Um, and there's a lot of volunteer time that goes into that, and, um, and a lot of people send money there to provide services in this community, which wouldn't happen otherwise. And, you know, so, it's kinda like, we need to do that, and I don't know how, I mean, I think a lot of people are, are like, well, how do I even approach a building project? And so what we need is designers, and we need people in project management, and, you know. Just a willing group of contractors, try to get someone to come and install anything in your house, and it's, you know, you better not have an emergency.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking back, uh, six months ago to the Afghan refugees that were.
Right.
Relocated, or tried to relocate to Lime.
Right.
And that was a pretty substantial grassroots effort, and, and that might be the kind of way that.
A model.
Right.
This has to happen.
Right.
So.
That house is for sale now.
It is for sale.
And now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Orion, Orion's gonna sell it, and then buy another, I think he's gonna buy another house from our house.
Right.
So.
So are they not at the Breakfast on the Connecticut? No, they moved to the Hotel Coolidge, or last week, and two of them went to Chicago, so there's only three left, and they're.
But the house for sale is the one in Baker.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Now, they took off.
Richard's asking about.
Yeah, they, they.
That's because of the mice.
They, they felt, no, they felt like, it, it just wasn't a good fit for them.
They were, they were.
They, they were.
I think they were more from the city, and they missed, they couldn't.
They felt like they were in the wilderness.
Yeah, no, I heard they had, the, I heard houses infested with mice.
No, they saw a mouse, no, it was, it was a mouse. Anyways, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a good fit.
I, I, I'm occupied house, and I have mice, you know, so, yeah, mice happen.
I think there were bigger issues, and, you know, I mean, it was a difficult.
It wasn't a good fit.
Okay, so Breakfast on the Connecticut is good transitional housing, and, I mean, maybe that's what we really need to be thinking about, is, okay, we've got transitional housing there. And then where do people go? Not necessarily Afghan refugees, but people who have housing need that, um, are in our community, or there's, you know. Um, they're in our community because they work here, or they, um, you know, have lived here or something.
Yeah, well, Brett, Brett Ryan's trying.
Yeah, well, Brett's our, our housing provider, for sure, um.
How much does he charge for his basic units, and do they, where, where do they fall on the spectrum?
I don't know.
There's a lot of single women that are in them.
I know, but I'm just asking what the, what the prices are.
I don't know.
I, I'm assuming, I'm assuming they're, they're very fair.
Right, where, is, where would those, where, I wanna, well, benchmark that unit, does it qualify as?
I, I don't know.
Affordable housing, or affordable housing, and as, as some indicator of whether it's economically feasible to.
Well, it's like, the question is, is it thirty percent of that person's income or not? And if it's more, then it's not affordable for them, really, it's affordable for somebody else.
Right, we have our graphic counting standards.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the graphic, I mean, I know, I've.
They're, they're, that's all messed up.
It's all messed up, but even, even not having caught up, the, the limits. Are high, I mean, it, it's, I remember when I, I looked at the fir- the first time, and it seemed, oh, yeah, that's what workforce housing would be. Now, when I look at it, it's like, wow, that's expensive. And that's not even up to date, you know, with this last year where it's like.
When you come out in March.
Yeah.
Yeah, March or.
But Eric, the answer goes with Brett, I think, I think what Brett's doing is he's trying to help people that have lived in Lime for a long time, or getting older, and people that he knows, and I think he rents.
Now, Brett?
Yeah, and I think he, his rents are probably based on what they can afford, maybe, you know, individually and all that kind of stuff.
But that, but, I mean, that, that's neither here nor there in terms of what, what we can do, that's.
Right, but Eric was just asking what he, what Brett charges, and, yeah. But he doesn't have to make any money, so, you know, that's there again, you know, if you've got people like that that don't have to make money, then. It's a whole lot of lobbying.
Right, well, providing affordable housing, you don't make money.
No, you, you, it's not something people go into and make money.
But the contractor who does it is gonna have to make some money somehow, he's gonna do it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, yeah.
And the material costs are really high, I mean, it, it.
Yeah.
Things are, this is like, kinda the worst time to be. Building, um, it's a, it's a great time to be planning, um, but it's, you know, and all the, everything's gonna pop sooner or later, and. Soon we're gonna have contractors looking for work, but what would be great to do is to have some work all ready to go, permitted, and, you know, when the time is right for building, to be able to do that. Uh, I, I so wish that, um, you know, Earl's Place, now Brett's Place. Could have been, you know, changed over to housing units.
Well, it, it's what it is.
It's like, I know, but, um.
But that's, I mean, it's not, that's not up to us, it could have been, but.
I think it's gonna be a while before contractors, I have a friend who works for George Porter, Porter and Sons, and they've booked out three years.
But they're also, they're not, they're high-end.
Yeah, they are high-end, but they're still.
So, we need, and so, and so they, it's a different market, but, yeah, I mean, it's little guys.
All these guys are booked out, you know, for years.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, part, part of the reason people go is because they can't get any help.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, that is the other, the other side of it, yeah, cause this guy that works for George Porter, he told me they're doing a twelve-million-dollar house somewhere in either Norwich or south of, somewhere, and he said, I don't know how we're gonna do it, because we can't get the help now, you know, to do this.
Well, maybe the, the model to do is, and we already have one, is the Habitat House, where there's sweat equity, a lot of volunteer labor, and so what we need, and so we get. You know, let's build a duplex or something like that, um, try to get two families that, you know, could, could, you know, join the community, or go from rental to ownership, or something like that. So that'd be a duplex that is a condo, so each family would own. Own a half of it.
Yeah.
Something like that, and just get that, find a location and work on it, would be our project, get two families in, that's big.
Yeah, or maybe a head.
And that's gonna take a huge amount of effort, fundraising, volunteer time, and, you know, getting the lot.
Yeah, maybe, maybe do more Habitat, you know, see, that happened because Ray gave that land.
Yes, exactly.
And then we spent, you know.
And that's how it's happening now, now I'm giving you land.
There was a point years ago where I think the church donated land, and it didn't work out.
Right.
Um, but it's possible for things like that.
Right.
To happen.
Yeah.
But anyway, I think it's worth, you know, whether it's subsidized, or, or whatever, whatever, um.
Well, who's got, who's got an oversized lot, kind of in the, close to the village, that, you know, we could say, let's do a housing pro- or they'd be amenable to a, you know, a subdivision in housing, um.
Yeah, that lot that's right here, that would have Rusty, he's came in.
What's that foundation for, anyway?
I don't know, why you pour that into it?
Yeah, why is that?
So, water sale, forty-five hundred years.
Yeah, so, what I know, I mean, I, I spoke to Rusty about it, he, um. He put that there, he has, he's talking to Preferred Building Systems in Claremont to have a nice modular home dropped in, not, not trailer, but.
Yeah.
Uh, what's it called, pre-built, during the home, uh, and, and so that, that was there, um, and I think he just said, you know. The sketch agrees to do this, I got provisions, it's all ready to go, but I'm gonna put the for-sale sign up, if somebody wants to pay me three million dollars for the parcel, I will sell it, you know, and, and so, he, he's just.
What's the design idea there?
So, you're in the angle of the, yes, so he also, can I say this? I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can say this. Yeah, don't say anything you shouldn't say. So, anyway.
It'll, it won't leave this.
No, no, don't, no, there's a camera, right, I mean, don't, don't, don't say anything.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I've said enough, and, and so.
And, and we're, we're really getting off the, the track yet.
Well, but no, which, that's supposed, that, I, I had always thought that was supposed to be an affordable house.
Well, it probably would, you know, could be.
Not if it's.
But, but.
But this is the part of the problem, right, you can't control it.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be interesting to see. You know, maybe it's impossible, but, but I think it's worthwhile to see if there are creative ways that we can incentivize. Things, even if it means working with entities that subsidize. Because if we can incentivize things in a way that attracts, um, entities that subsidize, that, that could be a good thing.
I think Twin Pines was really interested in doing the project here, because that's kinda their mission, and they hadn't worked on Lime yet, and.
So, so what do they need? They just need land, right? And then.
They need land, and then a lot of money.
Yeah, they need money.
To raise, so they'd raise the money?
No, 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 we'd raise the money. The town raised the money, I mean, they, you know.
Through taxes or donations?
I don't think the town raised money through taxes, no, it'd all be donations, I mean, look, come on, we have fibers, we have a fiber system here.
I mean, anybody, anybody. Yeah, but so anybody who donated, it wouldn't be like, just like the Lime.
Right, I mean, we can, we can raise money to build a couple of houses, that's crazy.
You know, it's not gonna come through tax.
No, no.
No, I know, I know, I know, yeah.
No, it'll be donations.
I think we should put on, on the mailing, and Eric Fersenberg wants to raise your taxes.
I don't think so. No, what, no, and having Twin Pines involved is great, because then they're the ones that manage it, make sure that it stays affordable, and, uh, you know, in that, in that price range for, um, for people. And so working with a group like that, the town should not be in that business. You don't have the people to do that and, uh, you know, Twin Pines, they've got the expertise and, you know.
So, how does that hap- I mean, do we have a role in that or is, is that just?
Well, if we, as individuals, wanted to go out and try to find.
No, no, I mean, the planning board.
No, I mean, I mean, we can support it, uh, we can go out and work and we can come to our friends and say donate or, you know. Any, any one of us could find a person who might wanna subdivide their lot and who could afford to sell it at a bargain price or give it away. And we, as individuals, could assist them through the subdivision process. I mean, you know, so we individually, we as a planning board, I don't think so.
Maybe, but maybe, maybe it would be helpful for the, somehow for the board to clarify for citizens what our roles and capabilities are because it.
Sure.
Plants don't do development projects.
I know, but there, there may be, we, we, we've had the question posed to us in the past about why the town or the planning board is not building senior housing?
Well, the town could, if they wanted to get a housing authority or if the selectmen wanted that to be a project, they could go, no permitting at all, zoom right through.
Yeah, I think the misconception is that people, a lot of people think, oh, the zoning won't let anything happen. Well, that's not true, I mean, there's a lot of places that could happen in town, it just hasn't happened because nobody make money, that's the real problem. I mean, we have to maybe educate people more to what is possible.
Well, I think, um, once, I'm, I'm hoping that this solar energy thing's not gonna, you know, eat up too much time, it shouldn't.
It should, I think it's.
And, and I, you know, I think, um, for, for my part, I'd like to finally get a housing chapter um, and, and just examine, maybe reappraise, um, just what we're, what's possible, what's not. Especially in this brave new world, you know, what's possible, what's not possible. And, um.
Well, you know, I wonder, you know, Ray has decided not to go forward with the backend of his property, I guess.
Well, I think, I think he left that open.
Right, and so why don't, you know, why doesn't, if he's willing to allow that to happen and for some, for a group like Twin Pines to put in the housing back there, you know, maybe that, it's the perfect location and, uh, you know, we work with Ray. Cause, you know, he doesn't wanna be a developer, building houses, you know, till he's ninety, the rate it's going. But, you know, it, but just, you know, we really need to be thinking creatively, okay, who's got a little bit of extra land?
I think we need to be thinking creatively.
And, and the, you know, focusing it here in the downtown is what we want for convenience for the people that would live there and it reinforces what we say in our master plan. I mean, it just, it just takes time and money and, you know, people, you know, energetically and enthusiastically committing to it. I mean, look at CCL, that took a long time to kinda burp.
Yeah, it did.
And, uh, you know, so I, I know it can be done with the housing, but.
So, alright, so, um, let's, let's think about the, the housing chapter, what we can do, what, uh, and I don't know whether we ever wrapped up, I don't think we did, our, our trips, our, our class trips to the, um, southern part of Route Ten. Uh, you know, let's come back to this stuff and, and see what we can.
David was working on some, some things, right?
Oh, right, some maps and.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but anyway, let, let's get back to this stuff and let's get this solar thing, you know, god.
It's lingering too long.
It's taken.
Rich Maggie brought in some really good pictures, I thought that was good, and I thought yours was good, I mean, I.
Actually, yours was very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that really helped me understand.
Residential scale, so that's perfect.
Yeah, I think we're pretty close, I mean, if we can get this, get this cert, well, not cert, whatever, get it out there, get feedback, then we can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, but.
Well, look, it's taken us this long and I think everybody, I mean, is feeling good about where we are cause we don't have a divisive board, that feels really good.
Right.
I got a feeling like there's not gonna be blogs written about us that, you know, you know.
Alright, let's, let's, let's.
No, I'm just saying.
Promising that, but yeah.
It feels really good, um, to, you know, all be on the same page and.
It does, it, but that's, that's not a guarantee, that's not a guar- yeah, and to be fair, not everybody would, is doing a come by, yeah, but, um.
Right.
We're doing okay on this and, and that, a unified board is not guaranteed.
No, okay.
And that's okay. It's, um.
Well, I think compromises have been made on both sides.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, this, I mean, I'll tell you that from my point of view, uh, I've made a lot of compromises on this, but, uh, I'm willing to do it.
And, and I appreciate that you allowed something larger than what you originally envisioned, yeah.
But I thought, I mean, seriously, I thought that the discussion was great. And, um, I was convinced, I was convinced.
Did everybody watch that conservation thing, so you?
I did.
Yeah, and you talked about.
I, I emailed her and, uh, I have to email her again about something.
Yeah, I thought they covered a lot of good stuff.
Right.
It was, you know.
Well, I think it planted a much more rosy picture than, you know, she didn't talk about like the cabling and all the disruption to the site, you know, you should have saw, oh, there it is, you know, it's like, yeah. And the helical pier thing was great, you know, so we don't have the concrete, but even so, there's compaction of the soil with the, the equipment that need to go in, blah, blah. So it's not all as.
I'll tell you, that's the hardest thing for me to, um, you know, this is, this is such a, uh, generally agreed upon virtue, the, the solar thing, you know, and, and everybody, you know, we're all on board and it's the right thing to do. I really have a hard time getting my, my head around what is happy talk and, and what isn't, that's my, that's my biggest confusion.
Well, let me tell you, what was it, two years ago, we were like in COVID, I think Trump was with us and we were in COVID and there was this show about solar panels and, and like solar pane, panel graveyards and what it takes to source the metals that you need for solar panels. And I got a, I, I, that was shown on Earth Day, that's, it was an Earth Day, um, presentation. And I was like, you kidding me, I may as well just like, you know, stop now.
And then with, with EVs sourcing the stuff for the EVs.
Right, right, and that it costs.
Are just incredible.
I didn't realize that.
Yes, yes.
But we feel, you know, I mean, I, it's a net good, I mean, it's hard to argue with that.
Well, assuming we can, you know, you know, change the, uh, carbon curve, you know, so that we don't, you know, oil the planet.
You know, nuclear is still gonna be the way to go, but anyway.
You know, I mean, I mean, wh-.
Germans and their nuclear plants.
When, when they're.
France is eighty, what, seventy-five percent in nuclear, it's awfully high.
It's very high.
At least seventy-five.
But you know, just, just when the planet is, is beginning to think about doing something globally helpful, then you have Ukraine.
Putin.
And everything goes out the window.
I know, and Putin, he's a bad boy, isn't he?
He's a bad boy.